It's gonna be my fault that some people from the skateboard community showing up here. Um, yeah, they're not gonna be here till six o'clock. I told them six, so whatever. Can we flip flop these?
That works working and I can get on. As I fumble over here, off and on and on and on.
So, so how does Blythe get by with thirteen percent TOT? Have you ever been to Blythe? It's it's neighbors to Desert Center. The other part of it is that you better have your...
But you know, your summer going well.
So, it's a survival thing. You're not gonna camp there. And you're not gonna spend the night there. We're coordinated. Barstow. That's in town you drive through. You should never stop at Barstow.
Ricky, my heart is a kid, but my folks would always stop in Barstow. They'd get a hotel, half later they'd just... We'd always get a light one pool. A childhood memory from Barstow. Very far from Death Valley. That is the four corners of Death Valley. For every single truck on the road. I think only a motorcycle rider would know this stuff. Borax.
It is? The immunine, that's Borax.
Yeah, yeah. And the name, there's a cross street called Twenty Moon Road. So, here's where they run Borax.
You did in Death Valley?
No, in Death Valley. But I think Borax is made, is made from the chemical borax.
Yeah.
Yeah, borax.
Borax.
Borax, correct. This is a drive through Boron Factory on the left. Yes, hot ash.
Fun fact.
Well, if you've been traveling recently or... That's where you go.
Still a lot of traveling this way.
There is one. No, you know, it's that's where you stay when you visit your cousin who's in Barstow. Easy, easy. Easy. Hotel. Stories for something in Barstow. This is an interesting place. Was it, have you reset? I can't concur. Paris might die. Sorry. So, I'm gonna give her a couple minutes.
It's Stephanie. That's okay. Oh, we, we, we're not gonna have a car session. Yeah. So, it's, yeah, why don't you, let me know as soon as you get settled in.
Good evening, everyone. I want to call to order this special meeting of the Capitola City Council. I want to welcome and thank everyone who's in the audience for coming out this evening. Um, and also, um, this special meeting is being televised, is it not? But is this, it is, okay.
Check on that. Oh, yeah, now it is.
Okay, oh, good. So, um, welcome also everyone who's watching, um, uh, on your TV or your computer. So, let's begin with a roll call. Sue.
Councilmember Harland.
Here.
Councilmember Norton.
Yeah.
Councilmember Botar.
Here.
Councilmember Termini.
Here.
Mayor Story.
Here. And I'll ask Dennis, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I will. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dennis. Uh, the next item is, um, just the identification of additional materials. Um, I do want to let everyone know that, uh, up here on the daisies, all the council members, um, have received an email dated July twenty-sixth from, uh, Cheryl Bayon. Uh, and that is regarding one of the items on our agenda, uh, the skateboard, McGregor Park, um, skate park. Uh, we also have received, uh, from staff, um, some, um, information about TOT tax rates among all the cities, uh, in the state of California. That is well as a chart, a matrix, which is a list of the tax measures that we have had here in Capitola since the year two thousand. So, those are the additional materials. Uh, with that, we'll go to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Is anyone that, um, wants to speak on something other than TOT and McGregor Park? Hi, Lori.
Hi, Mayor. Hello, my name is Lori Hill. I am happy to be the president of the Capitola Begonia Festival this year. And we have a great big fundraiser coming up on Sunday, the third, at the Shadow Brook. Uh, we're calling it Begonias or Broadway at the Brook. I believe it's sold out. Um, thank you to the community for their support for this fundraiser. I did want to take tonight's opportunity, though, to present our new poster. Uh, it is this poster. And it was done by a local artist, uh, lives actually on Park Avenue, uh, and her name is Gloria Souza. So, we have discovered yet another new artist in our community. And I'm gonna leave this for staff with hopes they'll be able to post it at City Hall and in the other, um, city facility. So, thank you very much. Thank you for your support and come out and play with us.
Right. Thank you, Lori, and thank you for all your work, uh, putting on the Begonia Festival. Um, anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I'm gonna move on, uh, from that portion of our agenda and we'll go to city council, city treasurer and staff comments. We'll start with staff comments.
I believe our police chief has an update for us on the, uh, the incident on the beach last Friday.
Yeah, thank you, chief.
You're welcome. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Uh, we did contact the environmental health and the fish and game services that came down to examine the substance that we found in the, in the water, and they did do a complete examination. We do not have a confirmation as to what it exactly was. Uh, just so you know, through the process, it was a non-flammable, a non-oxidizer and not, it wasn't paint. Uh, it appears to be biodegradable, uh, had a strong fish odor to it. And so, it has been sent to Fish and Game and they will do follow-up testing to identify exactly what it was. We may not know for about four weeks, uh, but I just wanted to update you on this report from the environmental health.
All right. Thank you, chief. It, I know we don't know what it is, but any, uh, sense or evidence about where it may have come from?
Not at this point.
None at this time until we identify it. Okay, great.
Any idea how much of it was there?
It really wasn't that much. There was, there were, uh, small pieces of it. Uh, I actually did not see it. I know, uh, Steve Jesperdig, I don't know if you wanna comment on what it looked like or the size of it?
It wa, yeah, it was in small balls and I have, it's hard to quantify. There was, um, you could see some of that out in the kelp, um, beds offshore. So, you know, on, on the beach itself, I only saw a little bit that actually washed up on the beach.
Most of the efforts that we did was precautionary, just to be sure.
Did anchovies have a tendency to be oily?
They did indicate it.
Pull something up on the beach, so they were laying there dying, so.
They were, they did indicate it was a strong fish odor to it, so.
All right. Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Which will, um, city treasurer, any comments?
No comment.
Okay, uh, city council members. This side, this side? Yes, Stephanie.
I attended the, the SoCal Pioneer picnic on Saturday and it, for the first time, and it was really interesting and it was really fun. They are really our sisters and brothers. When you think about, and I mentioned this there, uh, you know, when you think back to eighteen fifty's, who was here? And it was the early pioneers, the Duvenvices and the, all the early families that settled in SoCal with the apple orchards and the cherries and lumber and paper and fishing and everything. We were SoCal Landing. We were not Capitola. And so, they had relatives lived over here in SoCal Landing. So, they don't really have a museum and so they love our museum and they love it that we have things that have to do with SoCal too. And some of their members are our volunteers. So, um, we're gonna try to, to put a pitch out to try to get some more of their volunteers to help us and more of a, of a partnership because they, they really appreciate having, um, a facility like this that can help tell their story. And when people come in and want to get, to look up the history of their family. And, um, Jeff Dunn, the author, uh, was the guest speaker and brought some of his books to autograph and gave a wonderful, wonderful heartfelt talk about what it was like to grow up. He didn't live, he didn't live there his whole life, but for a while, as a teenager, between Bates Creek and SoCal Creek and how the family would pack them off, you know, with their fishing poles and they would go out and, you know, catch these great, wonderful brown trouts and so forth. And it was, you know, it was, um, they call it the valley. They're talking about the valley. I thought they meant San Lorenzo Valley. That's SoCal, that's the valley there. Anyway, it's, it's new opportunity for, for collaboration and for volunteers and for helping to promote their history and our history 'cause it's, you know, it is all really very, very much the same and very intertwined and, and it was just wonderful. They have bought, um, about two and a half acres there and they're trying to raise money because sometimes the trees fall down and they have to pay to have, take them away, which costs about two thousand dollars. And, you know, they have very limited funds, so we talked them about some fundraising and things like that. And, um, so it was, it was very worthwhile and I think any way that we can help personally, you know, or, or otherwise, you know, to help them in the future would be, um, really good. The other thing that I learned about there, there's a woman there that is working on this SoCal cemetery. And I'm not sure how many of our cap, former Capitola residents are buried there, but I know some of them are. That's our cemetery too. Totally gotten into dis, fallen into disrepair, disuse, terrible shape. Has some sort of a private owner who has sort of abandoned it or sort of neglected it. They're going to John Leopold, Supervisor John Leopold, to see if they can't get some county money to try to help because it's just a wreck. And so, I said I would be happy to volunteer and see how maybe the city of Capitola could help in some small way because that is our cemetery. And so, if there's a significant number of people that, our residents are buried there, we, I think we have sort of a moral obligation to help out with the, um, the re-establishment of it or the upkeep or the help or the something or other. So, I'll be bringing that to, um, to you later on after I get a little more information about it. But, you know, some small part, I think, would be worth it. Because I remember going there for a walk years ago, just for a walk, to just walk through it and said, oh, there's so-and-so, there's so-and-so, there's so-and-so. So, it, you know, may be more significant to us than we really realize. It was, it was very interesting.
Right. Thank you, Stephanie, and for being ambassador for us with our neighbors in SoCal. Um, any other council members have comments? I, I believe everyone said no. Um, so now, uh, we'll move on to, uh, the general government, uh, public hearing portion of our meeting. Um, now, I have a, I have been informed that there were some individuals that were, um, going to be here to speak about the McGregor Park, but that would not be until six o'clock. Um, so, um, maybe wanted to entertain a consideration by council members to flip these two items. But before I do so, I wanted to, uh, Jamie, is, um, um, are you expecting anyone that may have been coming later to discuss TOT, the item five B?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I was contacted by one individual who indicated that they did plan to attend and address the council on the topic and, and I don't see, um, that person in the room right now.
Okay. Well, that's a little bit of a dilemma. Um, so...
Mr. Mayor, I might suggest, I have no doubt that we'll take more than fifteen minutes to discuss McGregor. So, I'm sure that we'll still be talking about McGregor at six o'clock and that perhaps we should just start off with that and, uh, we could even reopen public comment if that person's right.
And, um, maybe, uh, would that work out for you, Dennis? If maybe, I mean, it sounds like this item's gonna go on for a little bit anyway. And so, we can accommodate those residents who may come at, um, six o'clock. So, with that, we'll keep the agenda as it is and we'll proceed with item five A, which is to consider awarding a contractor earthworks paving of Capitola for the McGregor Park project. Um, the recommended actions are to award the contract in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand and two dollars, um, including an optional bid, uh, item A, and to direct the Public Works Director to issue a contract change order to remove bid items six, eight, sixteen, twenty and twenty-three from the contract, reducing the contract price to a hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars. Um, and direct the Public Works Director to review the remaining contract elements and determine if further cost reductions can be made. And finally, approve a budget amendment in the amount of four, twenty thousand dollars to cover the maximum identified contract cost. So, with that, we'll move on to the staff report and, um, Steve, you're gonna lead us in that?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, just to recap, we considered this item last week and, uh, due to the way the agenda report was written, we couldn't award a contract, so we're bringing it back tonight. Uh, staff's recommendations, as you just mentioned, are to award a contract to earthworks paving. They were the low bidder. We had seven bids on the project that are, um, tabulate, tabulated in the staff report there. Um, at this point in time, we are recommending that we, uh, move forward with optional bid item A, which is the construction of the skate park element of that project. Um, we do have a commitment of, I believe it's fifty thousand dollars from the Monty Foundation to, uh, help build that, um, portion of the element and put the, the ramps in there. Uh, Lisa Murphy's here if we have any questions about the Monty down, donation. But at this time, since we have a commitment of funding for the skate park, uh, we're recommending that option A be included in the award. Um, to, to reduce the cost, um, I went through the bid items and kind of eliminated things I thought we, um, made sense to eliminate at this point. If we want, we can always go back and kind of add them in, uh, either individually and have them done by the city or move forward with, with another contract. But, uh, the base rock parking lot, basically that's been a gravel parking lot out there for the last, you know, twenty years. Probably has a pretty good foundation in it. Um, and so, we're recommending item six, which is the aggregate-based parking lot be removed. Uh, the concrete wheel stops, um, I think we can kind of make it a more informal parking lot if at this point. We will have to put the ADA spaces in, but, uh, rather than having striping and wheel stops everywhere, we'll, we'll kind of keep it informal. If we need to do more later, we can. Um, I also removed the dog cleanup stations and drinking fountains. I think we can fundraise or, or put those in at a later time. And the parking stall designations, which follows the previous items. Um, eliminating this reduces, uh, earthworks bid to a hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars. They remain the low bidder. I did, I redid the tabulation just so, make sure we didn't end up with another low bidder by removing those items, but they do remain the low bidder. Um, there are probably other contract savings, um, I can work with, with the contractors. We go through this. Um, that's why the item three is to direct me to continue to look, work with the contractor in reducing the costs. Um, but I am asking for a, a ward that may, could total a hundred and sixty-six, five hundred and sixty-three dollars. And to cover that, I do need a two, twenty thousand dollar budget amendment. We're recommending taking that within the CIP project. We have an undergrounding project that's still two years out, um, that we can borrow the money from in that and reimburse it before we move forward with that project. So, that was my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from council members? Yeah, Mike?
Um, Steve, first of all, the dog cleanup station, is the, is that, um, something that has water facilities connected to it?
Yes, we are still moving forward with the irrigation and landscaping. I didn't take that out, so we'll have it stubbed out.
On behalf of the dog owners, which I'm not currently, um, six hundred and fifty dollars is a pretty small savings in the grand scheme of things. What's the rationale to eliminate?
So, there was two of them. One of them is actually part of the donation from the dump, uh, dog park donors. Um, that they're gonna put one inside the dog park area. We also had another one on the outside of the, uh, uh, more in the runways between the two elements. And so, I eliminated that one at this point. I, I kind of picked it in the drinking fountains.
It, it seemed like a pretty small savings for eliminating a feature, even though it's a duplication.
Right.
Um, and secondly, with regard to option A, the skate park, the, the largest part of that is the AC paving. Until we have designed the ramps and where they're gonna go, why are we placing any? I can see doing the chain link fence in the Perk Basin because that would be part of any use we would put that skate park area to. But the AC is so particular to the way, where the ramps are positioned and, and how the park is designed, it seems like it would be prudent to hold off on that until we have some kind of a ramp designed for that area. Is, am I thinking the right way, the wrong way?
No, I think you're right. And I think we can, if we're moving forward with putting that element in, we can hold off on the paving, um, keep it in the contract though, so that when we have a design for the ramps and all that, we can have earthworks install that for us at that time. So, I'd still recommend we do it, but I agree, let's get it designed so we put it in the right shape and in the right location.
Right. Just spreading some AC around. Just spreading some AC around.
Right. It's a little more than that, but yeah, but I think...
Right, sure.
But yeah, let's get it designed. I agree.
Okay. Thank you. I have no other questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dennis?
Steve, are you thinking of taking out both drinking fountains or just one of them?
At this point, I took them both out.
Seems like we need to have one drinking fountain out there. With the recreational activities, there needs to be some, some source of water. Can we get the water district to donate that?
I'm sorry.
So do you want me to add back in a drinking fountain?
I'd like to make that discussion.
Okay. We can decide that later.
Yeah, I think that that would be part of our deliberations about maybe what we take out, put in. But maybe just to clarify a minute, on the dog cleanup station, and what exactly is...
So it's essentially a drinking fountain for dogs and it also includes plastic bag dispensers.
Okay. Now, there will, even if we remove it here, there will be one because it would be privately funded.
Yes.
So it would be within the interior. This was to provide an additional one on the outside of the dog run area.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. But that's not true for the drinking fountains. There's no one that's privately funding, putting in a drinking fountain.
As, at this point, no. They're both just in the common area of the park.
Okay. Okay. And I did, Lisa, I wanted to ask, I know I caught you at the very last moment, but at the last time there was, I know, and I had brought up and the thought about whether the Monti Foundation was willing to apply their donation to, let's say, the pump track component as opposed to the state skate park component.
All skate park.
And just, just skate parks.
Skate park.
So that's, okay, they devoted to that. Okay, thank you. Any other, yes?
Steve, just trying to get my numbers right. I'm reading the chart. The suggestion was brought up to hold off on the asphalt in a skate park, which I read is $14,000, give or take?
Correct.
And that would be positive coming in, and if we were to add a drinking fountain, it would throw back eight, still positive of six. And then if we did the dog parks, it would be a positive of five. And you've already said that we were willing to go 20 in.
Yeah, and I'd like to add, there may be other cost savings that we can find as we're going through this that allow us to add these elements back in too, but...
But for us now, for our discussion, if, if there was some kind of a consensus to hold off on the asphalt but put in at least one drinking fountain and the dog cleanups, it would be an additional five, or it'd be five to the positive.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Steve, what is the game table?
That is, uh, it was a table in the, kind of the general play area for people to put a board down and play, play a game. It was more of a seating area and a small picnic bench, similar to what we used to have in Peary Park.
I see.
Something along those lines.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
We still have those benches we could move?
I don't think they're in very good condition.
Hard use.
They have history.
They do.
They have initials in them and say words in them. Let's...
So if, if there are no other questions, I'll, um, I'll open up this item to members of the public. If you'd like to address the council about the McGregor Park project and this particular contract bid, and also including the optional bid A item, which includes the skate park component and elements of the bid. Now, those are the asphalt for $14,000, a chain link fence for $12,000, and a percolation basin for $9,000. And those are what's contained in the option item. So with that, if there's someone that would like to address the council, please come up.
Hi, my name's Liz Toshiki Anettinger. I live in Cliffwood Heights, lived in Capitola for about 40 years, so obviously most of my life. I just actually wanted to kind of get some information and know what was happening with the skate park at McGregor. I'm a dog owner. I walk the mellow park that is in between New Brighton. Over there, I don't know if you guys know where that is. It's the open area where a lot of people with dogs walk. So I travel that area on a regular basis and have been for 25 years before it was even a part of the park system. Use New Brighton and that area regularly, if not on a weekly basis. That's our preferred beach location in Capitola than Capitola Village. I've been curious about it. Heard a lot of the different things going on with it at Noble Gulch, the parking lot up here, which has already been taken care of as a parking lot. And I wanted to know more about it. I'm trying to get information, get involved. But from the neighbors that I've spoke to who were in support of Noble Gulch, but at this point, they would like to just move forward, really had some major concerns, and I'm talking about the neighbors in Cliffwood Heights primarily. There's about 20 families or so that I've talked to directly with and have heard of about 50 so families in that neighborhood that would like to support, all different ages. Some of them are third generation residents of Cliffwood Heights, parents are original owners. But they all want to make sure that the city council, one, has some sort of effort to control, maintain, or provide pedestrian travel from Park Avenue Kennedy Drive through McGregor. Having lived in that neighborhood my whole life, I watched the New Brighton kids come over from basically the other end of Park Avenue and try it across the Cabrillo traffic, et cetera, and I'm sure all of you know it can be kind of a headache for some people. But to have some of our other families with little kids get from our neighborhood and from the other neighborhoods in Capitola and Aptos to that area and see what the city council was going to do about that. The other issue was the funding, which I've heard from Lisa, the Monti Foundation, and you guys said are putting some money behind that. But also that the planning for it, that it's not just a skate pad, that there is a little more in-depth planning going on before any city money or foundation money is spent on it. I know there's some other concerns with, and having, like I said, walked that area many times, that we are now sort of getting that trickle over from Santa Cruz and Santa Cruz County in SoCal of homeless and drug use and problems. And thank God I have my German Shepherd that walks with me because I've seen issues in that area. But I think with a dog park and a bike pump and a skate park and the police knowing that the kids are there, I think we could have a lot more monitoring from the city and from the local communities as to what goes on there. We also have the state park right there. So obviously, if there's something on their land, that they would need to be a part of taking care of it. So that, those are my concerns. That's the things I wanted to get communication with. I've had, like I said, different families that are interested in supporting it, but wanting to make sure that it goes the direction that's going to be long-term, so that people will be able to use it long-term, and that it will be safe for kids of all ages to enjoy that area, so.
Thank you, Liz.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Tori Del Favre and I live here in Capitola. And I'm going to reiterate just having a park that's well thought out. I understand it's a funding issue, but now we're at the point where we don't have drinking fountains there. That's not a park. A park is a place that we can go and have a community and have people get together. I just, it needs more planning and it needs to be thought out a little bit more. And I understand that we're all trying, but I, I just think that we can do better than temporary. And I think that our kids deserve drinking fountains.
My name is Marie Martarella. I wanted to come and respectfully ask that we postpone option A on the vote for this evening. As most of you know, we have been working very hard for a very long time to have a skate park in Capitola that we can all be very proud of and that will serve the community for many years to come. We have identified an alternative site and we have funding that would not need to come from the city to put in a permanent, very well-planned park that would enhance the community. We would just like to see if you would please hold off on voting on option A for this evening and at least allow us to present our proposal to you for consideration before making any sort of commitment, whether it be temporary or a temporary long-term, as we seem to do in this town out at McGregor. You know, I could beat the dead horse on all the issues that I think we've all talked about in the past, and I know that there's been a lot of community comment on the safety factor, on the location. It's very out of the way. So it does definitely bring about an, a concern of, of mayhem, if you will, or chaos that, that may not be so readily noticed until maybe too late. So I would like to just ask you to please consider allowing us to present a proposal to you for an alternative site before you make any firm decisions, just with regard to option A tonight of the contract. Thank you.
Could I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Are you able to make, to give us information about that tonight?
I can. My concern is that, I think that you held a special meeting to discuss the McGregor project as a whole and doing the funding and the, getting the contract for Earthworks. And I feel as though if we bring that up now, I don't have the revised plans with me tonight. I can have them, I can, I have them. I just don't have them with me tonight because I did not want to get in, I didn't want to take away from the intent of your meeting tonight. I just wanted to ask if you would please just hold off.
So if we did that and we had a special meeting next week, could you present us with a plan and funding and we could consider that?
Yes, absolutely. And would very much appreciate that.
And do you have support from the neighbors and, you know, things like that? Because that was what we ran into before.
Right. Right. So, I mean, if I can speak a little, you know, freely, I, I think that no matter where we contemplate putting a park, there's going to be neighborhood dialogue. I don't think that there has been overwhelming support from the skate community necessarily to put the park at McGregor, the skate portion. I'm only referring to skate portion. So the lack of enthusiasm for putting the skate park at McGregor is in and of itself, you know, the, the community is showing that they're not super behind that, that piece. I do know of some families that most likely would not be thrilled in, in any neighborhood if, if there are changes, you know, change, we're all a little apprehensive about change and I, and I respect that. You know, I live next to a railroad track. I understand, you know, I used to get irritated when the train would go by, but I have a house near the railroad track. I think that we have overwhelming support, and I think we could probably fill this chamber with, with a, a great deal of people who would be in support of a very well-crafted, thought-out, permanent park in, in this, in this town. Can I say that nobody's going to complain or comment?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying if there's another location that you think is great, that you think the neighbors will accept it, I really am interested in that because that was the problem last time.
Mm-hmm. And I think that, and I think that, I, I think that we do have a great deal of support for the alternative site.
From the neighbors. That's, that's the key.
I do think so. I do. I do. And, you know, and if it comes down to, you know, 40 versus 41 percent, or, you know, 40 people versus 41 people, you know, I can't, I can't give you for sure. But I do know, we have, we have been working very hard behind the scenes, you know, trying to, to make this happen. I, I can't get behind putting it at McGregor just to check the box and say, look, look, well, a, a park out there is better than no park at all. I don't, I don't believe that and I, and I, I understand everybody's working very hard to make that great out there. I just don't think it's the best place for the skate park.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Tricia Proctor, resident of Capitola. And, um, along with Marie, Tori, I have also been working on a skate park in Capitola, permanent park. And I am so against McGregor. I can't even tell you, you guys have seen my letters. I feel that McGregor is off-site, it's out of sight, it's off the side of a freeway, there, you've got the homeless that are out there. I'm asking you to please hold off on voting on that option A tonight, and let's just revisit some other things that we've all talked about. We have funding, hoping we have the community to support. You're going to, we're going to get neighbors that are going to complain regardless. I live across from Shadow Brook. I hear the noise all the time, but I live, that's where I choose to live. So I just, you know, we have to learn from our neighbors that did this out at Ramsey, a temp park. It, it was not well thought out. Now they have to start over from scratch. And so I'm just letting you know that I, my kids are 12 and 15. There is no way that I'm going to send them out to McGregor. Absolutely not. They have no way to get there. There's no safe route. I keep hearing that there's going to be trails put in and all these other things, but no one has come forth to actually walk those trails with me, so.
Where did you hear that Ramsey didn't work? Because that's not what I heard at all.
It was in the newspaper, in the Sentinel. And so now they're redoing it and they're moving Ramsey. They're actually putting in a permanent skate park and they're moving it to a visible location. But the temp ramps did not work. They failed.
Okay. Because I talked, I reported on this at the last meeting. I talked to staff person there and they said that they were moving the park to the front for security reasons, safety reasons for the users and so forth, that it did work very well in the back. That's not why they're, they're moving it.
No, we went out there several times.
They're moving it to upgrade it, to upgrade it to today's standards because when it was first put in, a long time ago, and that was very different designing than it is today. And so they're upgrading it for today's needs and uses and designs. But they're, they're, felt it was very successful before and it will be also.
Well, I'm sure someone's going to say that, but it did not work. I've been out there, my kids, we went out there. The temp ramps did not last. They did not function as planned. It cost them a lot of money to put those ramps out there and now they're having to start over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion. Yes, come on up.
Hello, my name is Terry Campion and I own a skateboard shop here in town. And I just wanted to say one particular thing that caught my attention in a newspaper article recently. It said that there was a lack of interest from the community on a skate park. And I would just like to sort of change that wording to, we've cried wolf so many times on a skate park. I've seen this room full of kids and I know some of you have too. We've lost our drive because of, we've been just beaten down on this subject for so long. And I think that the frustration has kind of hit a point to where I know the kids that are my customers and our neighbors, kind of feel like there's never going to be a park and that this subject, it's been going on for 20 years to have a place for these kids to go and skateboard. And the other thing that kind of got me is I realized it's a tough budget situation, but so rarely in this state and in this country has the burden of a skateboard park been put on the public and the kids. We didn't charge them to build baseball diamonds. We didn't charge the kids to build tennis courts. We've never done that, I don't think, in this community, except a, a, a project of this undertaking. It's not just shovels and we're going to build some bumps in the dirt. This is actually a large undertaking to put on the community. And I've, personally, I'm frustrated. I raised a lot of money to support this cause for these kids. I've written a lot of checks out of my own pocket. My frustration is we had a private donor, we had a council that approved a location, we had the opportunity, I think, to create an asset for this community. And personally, I felt like we were sort of, I'm not going to say lied to, but the community around that location rallied you guys to change your mind. And I just feel like some bad decisions have been made in regards to a location for a skate park. Don't get me wrong, any place to skateboard in this town is a place to skateboard in this town. But I just really feel like we are missing the opportunity at hand to have a class piece of equipment built for these kids that's going to last generations and not be a temporary place that, you know, there's no future of. So I just would hope that, you know, with that being said, I want to thank all you guys for at least considering a skateboard park for these kids. You know, I, I think we sold about 5,000 skateboards last year out of our store, right here in town. I mean, it's not going anywhere and I think that we have an opportunity to really do something good. I just hope that we continue on that path. And with that, thank you.
May I ask you a question, Jerry?
Yes.
Yes.
If, if you could, if we had a park, what about McGregor as a location for a skateboard park?
Well, I know from talking to the supporters of a skate park, there's funding issues. Um, we all know it's not.
Say we could overcome that. Okay.
Well, it, it is a place to skateboard. I worry about the location. It's not central. It's not easily accessible by a lot of kids. Um, we, we all know it's not safe for a kid to walk on that street. I wouldn't want my kids to walk on that street, you know? And so it's generally, um, that's the segment of that location that are, the young kids are, in my opinion, aren't gonna be completely safe. And that safety is getting there and getting back. That concerns me. And the idea of a skateboard park in this community is for the young kids who, um, unfortunately have, you know, two working parents so they can live in this community. And they don't have, a lot of these kids don't have mom to take them to the park. There are very few do. They're the lucky ones. If mom doesn't work, wow, they're lucky. So these kids are gonna be on their own. And, you know, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, cause there was a location that, you know, the kids basically could get out of school and go skateboarding. Wow, that's really cool. So, yeah, that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Jerry, let me ask you a question. Should we build a skateboard park at McGregor?
This is my take on it. I do not think it's the best location. And if we build it there, I think we're compromising the community. That's just how I feel. And if it's the only spot that we have, well, then we have to address that time. That's, that's my personal take on it. I just feel we, I feel it's probably the worst location. Now, with that being said, again, there's not a lot of open dirt in Capitola. I realize that. But like I said, I just feel like, I feel like we all hit the gavel. We're like, yes, we got this. And then we had somebody that was like, yes, we will pay for it. And then a couple of neighbors said, we don't want it. And we weren't invited to that meeting, unfortunately. I would've loved to have been at that meeting when the neighbors expressed that concern and then it was gone. And so.
You're talking about Monterey Park.
I am talking about Monterey, yeah. It, I, I know it's a dead horse. That is the best location this town has for a skate park, period. Period. It is a community park. Community parks are for everybody. Um, that is the number one location. And I, I truly believe that. I feel if we go to McGregor, honestly, let's all agree, McGregor's a great hotel site. You know, I think, I think everybody in this room will agree. It's a, well.
No, no.
Well, I think it's a great hotel site. My, my grandma would stay there. Um, and.
What would you?
Well, I unfortunately don't live, you know, in an area where I'd be commuting to it. But I think the state park would love to have a hotel there, cause that's where granny would stay. Um, but I just feel like the word temporary scares the daylights out of me. Cause that means it's not forever, you know? And, um, and then we may not have a place down the road. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jerry. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the microphone and I'll bring it back to council for deliberation and, uh, hopefully some action. And Mike, you would like to begin?
I have a different recollection of what this room was like when we talked about Monterey Park. And I have to tell you, number one, I have to agree with you. McGregor is not the best location for a skate park. I voted for Monterey Park. When we reduced the size, the funding went away. We didn't do that. We kept it at there. We voted three to two. And as soon as we changed it from nine thousand to six thousand, no one was interested in talking to us anymore. And that's the way it came down through staff, from the funding source. And it was really discouraging to the, to the three that stepped out of their comfort zone. Because anytime anyone sees forty residents from any neighborhood in this room, we have to pay attention. If forty of you, where you live, wherever it may be, come to us and say you don't like something we're doing there, we have to pay attention. If it were two or three neighbors, you may, there might've been a nine thousand square foot park there today. But it was a serious meeting, as I recall. I think that we should leave the drinking fountains in. I don't think we should do the paving because we don't know what a skate park's gonna look like. But the other two items can be used, no matter what we do for that area. Expand the pump track, expand the dog park, whatever. Sixteen thousand for paving will pay for the two water fountains. That should be done. The third thing we should do is we need to make a concerted effort in our CIP plan to focus on that area and make it pedestrian friendly and make it so that it is a safe path. Because it's critical. And the, it's the only way we can make a less desirable place, a more desirable place, is to bring it into the community with, with pedestrian and, and pathways and sightlines. It can be part, more part of Capitola because right now it is very much in the outlands of Capitola. Um, again, both drinking fountains in, no AC yet because we're not really sure what a skate park looks like. Um, and, you know, we need, it, it needs to be a large scale pedestrian project. It's not, we're not talking about twenty thousand dollars for some DG pathway. We need to pay attention to it. We know that we've had a problem on Park Avenue alone, just with the kids going to school. So if you even take the skate park out of the equation, we've been living in the danger zone with Park Avenue. We've addressed the speeds on Park Avenue. We're working on that. Um, and I think that, you know, six-figure projects have to take place at that end of town to make it real. I agree with Tori. Without two drinking fountains, it's not a park at all. Let's just go ahead and do it and do it right. If it means a little more money, that's fine. But taking out the AC and putting in the fountains, it's a wash. You know, and I think it's a, it's a, the right way to go at this moment. And, and while I agree, not the best place for the skate park, I am committed to get a skate park in this town and to make it a safe place to go. Uh, and I'm tired of the word temporary. We have a temporary parking lot. We have a temporary dog park, temporary skate park. If we embark on this, let's make it real. And let's just do it. So, those are my feelings.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else?
Well, everybody should talk.
Uh, we will.
I, I mean, I think we all have reservations about the location, but there was such an interest and demand for something, do something, do something, do something, that we started working on this. So, you know, I think we all still have reservations. I'm willing to go along with it and try it and see. It is, it is a lot of money. And, um, I know it's a dangerous place to, to, uh, try to send kids. If it looks like it's gonna be a problem, close the skateboard park and just keep it there for the other, others people that are gonna be using it. If they're not walking there, if they're gonna be driving there or riding, I don't, I don't know. I think we just have to wait and see how it works out. Which is not a good way to plan things. We should know how it's, you know, more or less how it's gonna turn out before we do it. But it's one of those things where, you know, there is an interest. We do wanna do something. We don't have any other land that's probably possible to do it. We may find it in the future. Hopefully we will. If we don't, we don't. You know, we're two and a half square miles. You, you can't do everything. We can't be everything to everybody. So, we have to utilize those limits. So, hopefully this will work out. If it doesn't, then we'll go to Plan B.
Thank you, Stephanie. Dennis?
I'm having a hard time understanding why a skateboard, um, kids and park is any different than a BMX park. Why is it okay to have a BMX park over there and, and it's not safe to have a skateboard park? It's the same age group. They get there the same way. Um, it's, it's basically the same, same function. The more people that you have with eyes on the street, the safer a community becomes. And that's true with that park in that area over there. If there's a vagrant problem, and maybe Rudy can give us an update on that, I, I've never heard of it in there, but I, I'm not denying that there is, there may be one over there. But I'll tell you what, it'll be a lot better now, if you put facilities in there. You're gonna have parents over there with dogs. If you go to Scotts Valley, if you go to Scotts Valley Skate Parks, um, their, their houses are, are no farther away than Cliffwood Heights is from this property. It's the same thing. Kids, kids, kids do walk, I'm not, I'm not, I'm, maybe the pathway may be a little safer. It isn't something that we can't work out with state parks and make a safe path over there. It needs to eventually be part of the program. But most, most of the kids that come to skateboard there of all ages are brought there by the parents in their car. And we're gonna, we're gonna see the majority of them coming that, that, that way to that park. Um, we spent hours and hours in public hearings on skateboard parks. And I can't, I know of at least four places in this community that we proposed to have skateboard parks. Last one, Monterey Park, I wanna add a little bit to that is, is that, is that, that we thought we had some consensus in that neighborhood. It turns out we didn't have consensus and they spoke loudly. And then, then the, the school board and the school, and the school district went south on us in the middle of the thing after they, after they indicated it was okay with them. So it, it was, we did what the community asked us to do. We took it out of that, out of that, that project picture. I admit, there, there are better places for it. I'd love to have it right behind us. I'd love to have it, Jade Street Park would be just a fantastic place to do it. We don't own Jade Street. So, you know, maybe the school board would, would accommodate to us over there and we put it there. But right now, as many places that we have tried, it has not worked. And the only place, this is the only place where there is not public opposition. And it's more than public opposition right now. It's public opposition and, and complaining in the future that's a problem. It's having a skateboard park that all of a sudden is a problem to the neighborhood that's adjacent to it. And that's, that's just as bad as putting, putting it in the wrong spot at the right spot. So, um, uh, you know, you know, for, for Tori, Maria and Tricia, I'm all in favor of you guys going forward with doing what you're doing. You still have time to do that. That doesn't stop that process. But we have to, we, we ask the council and as a city, it's already made a decision that we want a skateboard park at, at McGregor. We've already made that decision. In a public hearing, two public hearings, we made that decision. To step backwards now will be, um, counterproductive. The other, the other problem we have with that is remember that this, this bid here is more than just for the individual facilities there. The bid is for the whole project. So if you pull the skateboard park out of this thing, this whole bid is gone. You're back over to ground zero, because it's a whole different program. A new design for the whole place, new costs, maybe the, yeah, certainly the cost may be less. But we, we have a donor that's come forward with fifty thousand dollars or close to that, whatever it's gonna be in that, in that round. So we have a good start and we, as a community, right now, within a year's time, can have a skateboard park. It may not be the best location, but it will be a skateboard park in our community that can be used. If we work towards, in the future, towards finding a better spot for it and a, and a, a better facility, great. That's great. But now is not the time to jump off the boat, right now. It is time to move forward and, and approve this plan. And I support your, your, your motion, Mike. I think, I think that's the best way to handle this and.
Just as a point of order, I don't believe that Mike made a motion.
I can make it one, very simply.
Okay, then I'll second that.
Well, don't second it till I first it.
Okay.
Can you, before you do that, I think staff has just one point of clarification about the AC for the skate park.
Yeah, that, and I mean, it sounds like the intent is still to move forward with the skate park, at which point we're gonna need AC at some time. So I'm, I'm thinking out loud here, do we leave it in the contract now? We don't build it until we have the design. We could come back to you with the design and leave it in the contract. Or do you want us to come back with a design and we'll add it in, add it back in at that point?
Yes. That's exactly what my motion is. It is to remove the AC paving, just the line item of the AC paving from this contract, do everything else. Again, like I said, the other two items on that alternate A can be utilized for, with an expansion of the other uses. So that it was not money down the drain. I'm saying that the fencing, fine. The, you know, the perk area, fine. We can, we can utilize that. That can become part of it. I wanna take the AC out. I wanna put the fountains back in. That's a wash. This is my motion. I wanna go forward to, to award the contract to, um, to Earthworks. Um, and it's not appropriate in this motion to speak of our pedestrian access CIP project, but it's pivotal. And, and I have heard from skateboard parents and the, the truth, split, seriously. I've heard those that don't wanna hear anything about it at McGregor. And I've heard those that are for it. So, and regardless of what some people may think, there are, there's a large skateboarding community in our town. And we have to do this. So I, hopefully that's not problematic in the letting of the contract.
No, I mean, we can add and delete items as we want, but I'm, I'm still a little confused. Are we moving forward with a skate park in that area? Are we gonna design a skate park?
I think the motion is to, to that effect, okay?
Yes.
But that's only a motion. It hasn't been voted on yet.
Right, I realize that.
And, you know, I think that it is a skateboard park area in name only at this point. And that the only thing that really delineates it are the pads, the AC pads. I think the other portions, we can still develop the park. We can do something else in that area if it comes to pass that there's some miracle and there's a neighborhood that will accept a skateboard park into it. For now, for tonight, I'd like to see the, the contract awarded with the AC out and the fountains back in. The reason I'm doing this is to make it a net zero as far as increases in cost.
Mike, are you, are you suggesting that, that they take the AC out of the contract altogether or just leave it in there and not, and, and put a hold on that?
I'm not sure what the mechanism is. I think that if we award the contract with that whole option A in there, then it's, it doesn't come back to us and it just happens. I'm, I'm trying to make it, number one, so that there's no difference in the budget and that there's, uh, and by the way, this is city money doing this. So, you know, we're, we are writing some checks here. We're not dodging out completely. Uh, I wanna make it with no change in the budget. And I wanna make it so that when, if and when the, the Monti money comes in and the skateboard park is designed, it can come to us as a piece to expend the Monti money, plus we can find another fifteen thousand to do some AC paving. Because, you know, I, I enjoyed Mark Monti's presentation. When the check's in the bank, I'll start feeling good. We can start planning something.
So to clarify, yes.
Okay.
The motion is that the AC is out of this, uh, budget for now.
Correct.
Okay?
One of our recommendations, though, I think, is that we, you know, given the cost limitations of the project, I don't think that building the fence around that area, um, until we know where the AC is going makes a ton of sense. Cause the, the fencing alone is a decent cost chunk. And I'd hate to put it in, ultimately decide not to do the skate park there and then end up taking it right back out to expand the bike park in a hypothetical scenario. The way it's laid out, wouldn't the, wouldn't the fence also encompass an expanded pump track? No, it would separate the two. A piece of it would. It's still, I'm trying to, I'm trying to fence in, I'm trying to, you know, make this more parking. Could you elaborate on the, on the, the percolation basin? Is that exclusive to the skate park area also?
That's an area to capture runoff that's off the skate park itself.
Just wanna make sure we're talking about all three, cause I'm confused as what's in and what's out. Well, isn't it, wouldn't that area, uh, deal with the runoff in, in its entirety of the park?
No, it was specifically identified for the skate park. Cause the rest of it were, is gonna be, the bike park and the dog park is gonna be bare ground or, or, you know.
Then if I may, let me alter my motion. Dennis, you can withdraw your second for now. Let's approve this contract without option A until you bring back the design for the skate park, at which time it can be, it can be picked up. Along with the contract for the fifty thousand dollars worth of ramps.
So are we putting back in, so including the drinking fountains?
Yes.
The dog, uh, cleaning station?
Dog cleanup stations that build, dog.
Okay, everything except for option A and parking lot items, I would assume.
Correct.
But we're staying with the existing design and the skateboard park is part of that program.
Yes, yes. That open, so that open area truly could be an expansion of the other two uses, or it could become part of the skate park when the Monti money is in our hands.
Wait, 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 wait. You're saying that, that it's, we're not making a decision to do the skate park? We're just?
It's, it's still the location for the skate park, in, in name only, because we don't.
Well, I, I don't like the concept of the fact that you could, you could alter those, that area there without, you know, that.
I think we've, we have, we have always looked at this in such a way that any of the three uses could be expanded, depending on the use, depending on what happens. If, what I'm trying to leave open here is the magic skate park bullet that puts it somewhere else. I'm still calling this the McGregor Pump Track Skate Park Dog Park. That's what it is.
Well, and we haven't really talked about what to do if by some chance Mr. Monti's money doesn't come through. I mean, he has, he has promised it. So I assume that whether he gets it from the, the merchants and the, the other people he's gonna get it from, or he, he just writes us a personal check, that it is good.
I don't want anything in my motion to be construed as not being committed to the skate park in this area. It is.
But what are we gonna do if, if by some reason that, that does not happen?
We cross that, that governmental bridge when we come to it.
Right. Well, as I understand the motion, it still leaves it an open question.
Right.
The intent.
Is for a skate park.
From your perspective, is to put it there.
Yes.
But that won't be determined until a later point.
The square footage, we're gonna dedicate the square footage for the skate park, but not approve it. Yes, yes. That's how I understand it. I hope that's.
Why don't we just approve it and then if the money doesn't come in, we don't have to deal with it. to deal with it? That way it can just keep on going that way, that direction.
I agree, Stephanie. We just approve it as it is, make the changes you suggest, and just let it go.
We don't want to micromanage this.
If we decide that, if we decide at a later date that there's another, the funding problem, or if, we pull it out.
But we need to be positive, be positive about this thing.
Let's move this thing forward, not leave it hanging.
Okay, so what I'm trying to do, we're trying to move it forward, and the only thing I'm leaving out is option A.
No, leave it in there, let's see where we go.
If that's a motion, I second it.
Oh, and the only reason I'm leaving it, I'm taking it out, is I have yet to see the design for the skate park, I have yet to have Mr. Monti's money in my hand, and I don't want to spend, you know, $40,000 if the AC is in the wrong place, if the fence is in the wrong place, if the, you know...
Was the design going to come back to us anyway? And if so, if yes, why? I don't think the design was going to come back to us, it was...
Can we approve it and hold Alt. A until the skate park design comes to us?
Hey, you could award a contract and tell me, direct me not to build Alt. A until if we have an approved design for the skate park.
That is my motion.
Do we...
And I want to include the drinking fountains, please.
Okay.
I second it.
Well, let me get clarification on the motion, because there were other four points of the recommended action by staff.
The other deletions, I'm perfectly happy with, that's fine. The drinking fountain is the only thing that rubs me the wrong way.
Okay, and, but also to direct Steve to review the remaining contract elements and determine if future cost reductions can be made.
Correct.
To approve a budget amendment of $20,000, or is that moot at this point?
No, I think we need to, if we're leaving option A in and adding the drinking fountains.
Right, no, the most, this motion is to remove option A.
No, it's to approve the contract in its entirety and to not award, not, award's the wrong word, to not move forward on option A until the skate park design is brought to us. I think what staff is being concerned with is that the legality and that, and how we're slicing this contract, so that in the future our hands may be tied. Therefore, I'm, the motion is to approve the entire contract, but option A must be brought back to us before it's proceeded on.
Why do we want to see the design?
Because I want to see this integrated with the skate park as a piece. I don't want to go forward on a construction project that will not integrate properly with a skateboard design that we can approve.
There's a designated area, as it is.
Correct.
Basically, we're just not going to do any improvements to that designated area.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
I'm trying not to tear out any medians. I'm sorry, was that unfair to you?
Why do we need to, if we're not going to improve it?
Because contractually, it will be difficult to not award the entire thing and then to go back and just add it as a non-competitive, single-source bid, as it were, to a contractor. Am I interpreting that properly?
That's part of, it's more of if we're going to have it in the contract, let's just keep it in the contract now, so our intent is to build it, and we realize we need to come back to you with the design to make sure that we put the asphalt where it properly needs to be.
And we don't necessarily need to exercise it in its current form while we're under contract.
Correct.
There's a question for Steve, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, sure.
Are the costs for the basin, which looks like the estimate and the cost is, it's an increase of $6,000 and the chain link fence an increase of $5,000, are you okay with those overcharges? Or would that have been an area that you would have tried to renegotiate?
I can still go back and try and renegotiate, these are the contract prices we have, so...
Are those two areas that might be of concern to you, at least by the numbers?
Not necessarily the dog cleanup station, but the drinking fountains.
Not the cleanup, I'm talking about the percolation basin and the chain link fence.
The chain link fence, I think that's a pretty fixed cost. I don't think there's going to be much negotiating there. I think the, actually the asphalt itself, there may be some cost savings we could do there, looking at the design and looking what other skate parks have used for, if we can use a thinner or a different type of asphalt. So of the three, I think the only one that really has potential for cost saving is the asphalt itself.
Doesn't the chain link fence have potential savings as we finalize the design? Because the, right now the fencing area is kind of...
Only if it changes in size, yes, I'm sorry.
Right, right. If we finalize the configuration, there's a possible savings in the chain link fence, depending on the final area we decide to fence in. Because it's a pretty large area we have right now, which we may not be able to fill up with the ramps, given the current budget.
And hopefully, Mr. Mayor, the motion is clear at this point, since it's changed about four times. It's for the entire contract award, for option A to be brought back to us prior to construction with the full design of the skateboard park.
Not option A brought back to us.
And for the both drinking fountains to remain in the contract. Any other VE that you can possibly do is good, and the other items that you deleted is perfectly acceptable.
Did we get a free meter on that one from Water District for doing that project?
We're still working with that, we're, yeah. I don't have a firm answer on that, but, you know, we've had water services there before, and we hope to be able to put in a new meter there without any more cost.
Well, we just sold a piece of property next door at a very reasonable rate. You'd think that we had some rights to water on that property.
We have a will serve letter, I believe.
We have a will serve letter, yes.
Yeah, we do, okay.
Okay.
Are they going to charge us for it?
Well, just to clarify the motion, I, by including option A, my interpretation is it, from a budget standpoint, it no longer becomes a wash.
Correct.
Correct, by adding in two fountains.
That is correct.
So that, it becomes even more critical, I think, than to do a budget amendment for the $20,000, which is your...
Yeah, so, well, as I read it, we're adding in the drink fountain, the dog station, those are the only two items that I recommend to delete, they're coming back in. So then the budget amendment will need to be for another $6,650 over the $20,000 I recommended in the report.
Correct, that is correct.
Okay.
Are you still good, Ed?
So is there, Ed, you're seconding that motion?
That's fine.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to focus on, yes, Stephanie?
I'm not so concerned that it may cost a little more to do what we want to do, because those things happen, and especially today when we get these cost increases. I'm more concerned that we're moving forward, that we move, that we're moving ahead, and not just to move, but that we're going to be accomplishing some good things with this, I think. I guess the skateboard thing, you know, is still up in the air, maybe we can find a location for that. But I think it's good to move forward with this and try to get the contract out there, get it paid for. If we have to tweak it later on, we can, but I think this is, it's been a long time coming, so it's really good that we're going to do this, I think.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Ed?
I have some comments, and if you wanted to, if you forgot the motion.
No, no, why don't you go ahead if you have a question.
Yeah, just a couple of things, you know, back to the discussion. First, Jerry, as far as the comments you made, I want to say that I agree with every comment you made with regard to it should be a hotel, it shouldn't be a park. I still have concern about the policing of that area. I think in the, in the long run, if we end up, I voted against this project when it first came, and I still believe, even though we're moving forward, this, Stephanie, I appreciate that we want to do something. I still don't believe in my heart it's the best location for a skate park, mostly because of the access. It will become a dog park, it will become the pump track, people will go there, and as Dennis said, if we build skate park and we put ramps there, some people will go there. Whether it becomes a nuisance or a liability for us, only time will tell. There is going to be no desirable place where everybody's going to agree where we put a skate park, although, you know, the point you made, Jerry, was, you know, back when I was a kid, they built little parks all the time, and they didn't charge anybody for it, they just built them, and we went and played, and I know there's more expense for a skate park, and I think it's great that some private investor wants to do it. I, you know, I think it's good that the city's trying to partnership. I know that, I know that if we had more land in the city, it probably wouldn't be a problem, but we do have that as a problem, and every time we suggest what we think is a great place, it brings a lot of anxiety. So I still believe that there is a good place in the city for a skate park. It's not going to get neighborhood consent, but I think there's an obligation to deliver that. I would love to have something permanent. I think we're all tired of temporary. It's time for capital to have some permanent features. But in the meantime, you know, I'm going to vote for this motion, and I seconded it, probably because the main conclusion is that we're not going to put, we're going to hold off on doing the skate park, because I want to hold that out. If it becomes the pump track and the bike park and the other features, it'll probably be okay. I just hope that it doesn't become a policing nightmare for us for a number of reasons, and that's my comments.
I'm sorry, I have a question, which you just said, and you said that, you indicated that we're approving the pump park and we're approving the dog park, but we're really not approving the skate park? Is that what you're thinking? That's not what I see in the motion at all.
What I believe the motion is doing is dedicating square footage for a potential skate park, but there are no cash going into that right now, because I believe there's some belief that some other project may come up. We did not, measure A is, or item A is going to hold back any of the skateboard improvements. That's what I believe the motion was.
Well, we're going to see a skate, we're going to see a skate park design with the inclusion of the money, and that's why we're going to look at option A again, but it's going to get awarded to them, and it is a skateboard park. But I think that, you know, I know some of the places that some of the advocates of a different location have looked at, and, you know, if I were in that position, I'd sit down with a large group of people and talk to the people at the 41st Avenue Mall who have the largest unobstructed open land in the entire city, and 10,000 square feet of that is a drop in the bucket, and it is centrally located, and if they were smart, putting something in of that size and magnitude would draw so many customers to their retail establishments, it would be amazing. And it's something we've thought of, and it's something we've addressed with them, and we've had a deaf ear turned towards us, but I think that if consumers and if parents and kids walk over there, that is a place where the community could build a skate park to be proud of. Just a thought, but I'm still going forward on this.
Let me just make one quick statement. When you design a park, regardless of the elements, the major cost is just in creating the park itself, regardless of what's in there. So you are, you are actually placing money into a skateboard park when you're, when we're doing what we're approving here, because that's what's designed into it. So the only thing that isn't approved here is the design of the park. The park is approved, it's only the design of the park that is not approved. Am I interpreting that correctly? Okay. Right, okay.
Steve, let me ask you, because I understand the motion is to award the contract to Earthworks including option A. Once that contract is awarded, do we have any ability to alter? I know we can make change orders, but can we at any point say we're not doing option A improvements?
Yes, we can still issue a change order, a second change order, to eliminate those items.
Those line items, okay. Any other council members have other comments? And I guess I'm just going to, at this point, maybe say a few words and say that I'm not going to support the motion, because as much as I want to see a skate park, there just seems to be too much still up in the air, and particularly about this location. And, but I want to clarify, that doesn't mean that I voted against the skate park at Monterey Park. I was in the minority. And just, and my understanding, but I fully assumed that this, that it would be built there. And I'm not aware, my understanding was that the skate community, because of the size, got reduced to 6,000 square feet, that they were no longer interested in Monterey. And that's why nothing came forth afterwards. I'm not aware that, that any, that the city council or any city staff did anything to abandon or derail that project. So what, just with that clarification, and I think that that's why we looked at McGregor, because we knew we could build something bigger, maybe ultimately a destination skate park. It's not an ideal location, there's still some issues, but I will have to say that, you know, I walked the trail from Monterey, the intersection of Park Avenue and Monterey, along the tracks and right to that skateboard site, and never hit a street. But that's a future vision. I would certainly, I mean, I think that that's, when I originally looked at this location, I was looking at the long-term possibilities, and that this was just a start. It wasn't the best, there were some compromises that needed to be made, but this was a good place to begin. However, you know, since this has come up and with the opposition to this, and I think the big difference, I mean, for me, is because of the budget constraints and the vocal opposition to the skateboard portion, I think that's what makes the difference, Dennis, between the dog park and the pump track. We have not seen the same kind of comments from those constituents about that location. So, but with that, because it's, we seem not to be together on this proposal, and with the budget situation as it is, with the Monti money not being confirmed, I'm reluctant at this point to, I think, to move ahead with this, without, and even giving some folks the opportunity to present their alternatives and options. So with that, that's, those are the reasons why I'm going to vote against the motion, but I will call the question. Maybe let's have a roll call vote, Sue.
Councilmember Harlan?
Aye.
Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
Councilmember Botchar?
Aye.
Councilmember Terminy?
Aye.
Mayor Stori?
No. Motion passes four to one. Next, we go to item 5B, which is to consider a resolution pertaining to the November 4, 2014 general municipal election by selecting one of two alternative recommended actions. The first alternative is to adopt a resolution calling for a general municipal election and requesting the Santa Cruz County Elections Department to consolidate a general municipal election on Tuesday, November 4, 2014. Or option two is to adopt the resolution calling for that same election, but adding an amendment regarding the city's municipal code pertaining to visitor service fees, also known as transit occupancy taxes, and requesting the Santa Cruz County Elections Department to consolidate a general municipal election on that same date, in essence, including an increase from our, in our TOT taxes from 10% to 11%. So with that, we'll have a staff report. Jamie?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have a very short presentation for you this evening. I think the subject has been pretty well briefed, as the mayor adequately, very well described. You have two resolutions before you. The recommendation is to adopt one of the two. In one case, you'd be adding a TOT to the ballot, in another case, we would just be consolidating our elections with the general, general election to take place on November 4. As background, for those of you at home, the city's current TOT is 10%. The county and the city of Santa Cruz have 11% TOTS. The city of Watsonville and Scotts Valley have 10% TOTS. In general, for the city of Capitola, currently based on the current tax receipts from hotels, each 1% of TOT equals about $126,000 a year. The council will recall that we did some public opinion polling earlier this summer, and the results of that indicated about 74% approval, likely approval by residents, that they would support a 1% increase in TOT to match the county's rate, as well as the city of Santa Cruz's rate. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions? Yeah, Mike?
We have a question for the city attorney, and that is, can part of this ballot measure indicate a formal use of part of this 1%? In other words, can it be part of the ballot measure that X% be used for a particular purpose?
Yes, it could. However, that would essentially constitute a special tax, so the approval threshold would be different if you were to...
It would change it to a supermajority vote?
Yes, if you commit funds for a particular purpose in a ballot measure such as this, that would essentially create a special tax as opposed to a general revenue tax.
I understand, even if it's only, even if it's only a portion of the increase of the TOT?
Well, I think it creates a problem.
It's a gray area.
It's a gray area. You could describe, you know, potential uses or needs, but if you dedicate a portion of the revenue to a particular purpose, then that would essentially cause it, constitute a special tax.
And then the downside of that is, if we do, if we do describe some of the potential uses, it does not encumber future councils to not use it for that.
uses, it does not encumber future councils to not use it for that.
Uh, exactly. By, uh, by proposing a general tax, you, by definition, are not, uh, encumbering the funds for a particular use. That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Termini, one mechanism that's been used by the city, um, before is a resolution of intent, which describes the city's intent for the use of the tax, but it doesn't necessarily commit a future city council to do so.
And a follow-up question, the resolution of intent is not something that's been engendized, so this only, our, our action tonight only pertains to what we bring to the election department as our resolution, or as our ballot measure, but we cannot discuss, decide, or vote on a resolution of intent?
You could certainly direct staff to come back at the next meeting with a resolution of intent for your consideration, then, had specific uses.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify where we could and could not tread. Thank you.
Well, let me clarify that staff come back after the August 8th deadline, and then, um, craft and include a resolution of intent?
Yes, I think the council could, uh, at, at any point, uh, prior to the election, uh, adopt a statement indicating the council's preferred use for the revenue should the, should the ballot measure pass.
Okay. Thank you. Um, any other questions?
Clear from the city treasurer as to what the finance, finance committee discussion...
Can I just ask a procedural question first?
Yes, yes.
This came to us, because it was requested by Councilmember Termini at the last council meeting. We didn't really have a vote on it, though, did we, about whether or not we wanted to have a special meeting or talk about this at the special meeting? I'm just thinking the next time we maybe should, we should have a vote, we should have maybe a little more information about it, to see whether we really want to have a special meeting, and then invite people, you know, for the public, because a lot of people didn't know about this, a lot of people are interested in this, and, um...
I think we did vote on holding the special meeting, and it was voted on in the affirmative, um, and we did post the agenda.
Yeah.
And advertise it, so, um, it, it was a little out of the ordinary, and I, and I have to agree with you.
Yeah.
But we were running up against an election deadline.
And that was, that was why we did it, because we had this, we had this time crunch to get things on the ballot by a certain date if we want to, and that's why...
That's the only reason why.
Yeah, I know, and next time, I think we just ought to have a little more discussion information about it to see whether we want to put it on, because if, if we don't really want to have a special meeting about it, then it's a waste of time to have a meeting.
We really had no time to even get to where the public, because it was just brought up at, at oral communications at the previous meeting, so there wasn't a time period where we...
And I believe, I, I thought I had asked for a motion, um, on, on the question of holding a special meeting.
You did.
And it was approved unanimously, as I recalled, and so...
Yes.
And if not, I mean, certainly, there was an opportunity for council members to say, no, we should vote on that matter and not just schedule it, but, so, I, I think we're in good order here of how we got here. Uh, it was by the will of, of, of a sufficient number of votes among us to bring this, uh, to the table.
But without much discussion, you know, it was just sort of, oh, should we just do this? So I just wanted that to be clear in the public. We, we have not had an in-depth discussion about this ahead of time.
Um, okay, with that, um...
Could I ask for treasurer comments?
Yes. Well, um, I wanted to just, uh, close out that the questions on the staff report are now concluded, and so, um, now, and Christine, do you want to make your comments now, or wait till after public comment?
No, I can make my comments now.
Oh, great.
So the Finance Advisory Committee met on this, um, last year. Uh, a number of, uh, Finance Advisory Committee members supported it. We didn't take an official vote, but we did, however, look into the issue. Um, I just want to bring, um, to your attention the list of all the communities, and not to say that because everybody else around us is increasing their TOT tax, we should, but some things to consider is we do host a lot of events. With that comes a cost. We do have a lot of people who visit. With that comes a cost. We do have a lot, um, of pedestrian-friendly areas. With that comes a cost of doing those things. Um, but some cities that I just want to point out, Anaheim, 15%, so the greatest on this list was 15%. Um, there are actually some cities that don't have any TOT tax, and it looks like places you might not want to visit. But, um, one I really want to point out is Blythe, it's in the middle of the desert, it's 13%. Barstow, 12 and a half percent, and I'm pretty sure they don't host very many events. I could be wrong, but, um, so just looking at that list, it could be an area where we could use to fund some of these, all of these events that we do do, that we do host that bring people here. I also want to just bring your attention to the poll. Um, it looks like the voters want us to put this on the ballot, so, um, 74% probably, or definitely yes, so, um, again, we didn't take an official vote on it, but that's just kind of my opinion as the treasurer, so, thank you.
Okay, now I'll open up, um, the microphone to the public if, um, members of the public would like to address the council on this item.
Hi, Ted Burke, restaurateur in Capitola here, and I'm here to urge you to vote no in placing a higher TOT, also known as the hotel tax, on the ballot, raising it from 10% to 11%, primarily for two reasons. Uh, one, it's out of line with what other communities do. I'm sorry for, we disagree here with the treasurer. It's also out of line with the city's financial position as it is today. Uh, I was able to obtain, and thank you to Lisa Murphy, who responded very promptly to all my requests for data of the TOT rates throughout California. There's three pages, they each have three columns, they're in chronological order, so of the nine columns, two of the nine are over 10%, seven of the nine are 10 or less. So clearly, the far greater majority of California communities are 10% or below. And let me cite who some of those are besides Capitola. They include Coronado, they include Dana Point, they include Monterey, a neighbor, they also include Pacific Grove, another neighbor, Salinas, San Juan, or, excuse me, even San Jose, 10%. Um, San Luis Obispo, Saratoga, Scotts Valley, South Lake Tahoe, and of course, Watsonville, as has been mentioned. Again, these are communities that are like us, have tourism, and that, uh, the vast majority of them do not exceed the 10% hotel tax rate. I think it's also out of line with the city's finances. When this was first proposed a few years back, and did not pass, um, the fiscal year, uh, excuse me, the calendar year, TOT revenue in 2011 was 716,000. In 2013, just two years later, was 1.176, over a 50% increase. If you take a look at the fiscal years, um, 11-12 fiscal year was 912,000. The fiscal year ending 13-14 is 1.228 million. That's a 37% increase. So here we have hotel tax revenue, without raising the rate one bit, climbing 37% in two years, and now you want to think that you want to even get even more. Also, we have to remember that with the business community supporting a sales tax increase, the city now has enjoyed in its first full year, fiscal year, over a million dollars in sales tax revenue. Combine those two, from our perspective, you have about 1.3 million dollars plus new revenue that the city didn't have before, and now it wants even more. And for what reason? Because you think you can pass it? I, I think that that's really a poor reason. If you ask Peter, is it okay to tax Paul, he most likely is going to get a yes, but I will tell you that if this goes to ballot, it's going to be divisive, it's going to draw an organized campaign in opposition, and I think it's going to create ill will that's going to, uh, go far beyond just the election. So you may not think that a 1% increase is, means much, but obviously, it means much to the people who are paying this. It's going to mean a lot to the people who have long stays here, the vacation rental people. When you're paying that 1% a day for one week, two weeks, three weeks, that's a lot of money. That's money that I would rather see spent in the shops in, in the village here, the restaurants in the village here. And so those people have a good time, they think they get a bang for the buck, and they come back, uh, in other times of the year as well. So, uh, that's my pitch. Uh, I hope that we don't get into, um, the situation where, uh, we have such clear distinctions of opinion here that we get into, um, I guess, uh, dueling campaigns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Anyone else like to address the council on this item?
Dan Aspermonte, owners of the Marriott Fairfield, as well as the Best Western, uh, here in Capitola, as well as the Best Western in Watsonville, in a small property in, in Santa Cruz, the Seaway. In any case, um, yeah, Ted actually notified me the other day that this was going to be happening. I don't follow, I guess, what's going on here as closely as he does, and I thank him for doing such. Um, you know, I'm not someone who's against taxation. I think taxation is a very important part of our democracy, and I think it's, uh, in, and we, it's, uh, it's something that is a very good part, and it brings a lot of advantages, it pays for a lot of our services and things of the sort. But, um, what I'd like to ask the council in, in this situation is to reflect on whether or not you really do need these extra funds. If you do need these extra funds, then, okay, I, I see where you're going, and I'm, I, I think I could almost support you, not enthusiastically, but support that. If you do not need these funds, if you think you're doing well as is, I'd, uh, plead, uh, with you to, to not do that. I think already the statistics have been, uh, brought up, you know, I thought that, thought that was a little unfair to mention Blythe, because I think it's more important to actually look at the communities nearby. Um, and as Los Gatos, Milpitas, Mountain View, San Jose, Saratoga, all are at 10 in Santa Clara, um, in Monterey, Carmel, uh, Pacific Grove, and, um, and Monterey itself are all at 10. So I think those are communities that more like, more reflect what's going on here than Blythe. Um, I also found some statistics I thought were very important, I don't know, may I should share these with you? These were on the same website that I found the, the TOTs, there was also TOT revenues as a percentage of general revenues. And I thought that was actually more enlightening than looking at what, uh, what the TOT is throughout the state of California. And it also was TOT per resident. Now, this is back in 2010, this is before we actually opened up our hotel, or maybe it was when we were just opening up the hotel, the new hotel, which I think has had, uh, substantially helped increase TOTs here. At that point in time, the, uh, TOT per resident in Capitola was, in 2010, was $60. Uh, Santa Cruz is 69, Scotts Valley was 49, and Watsonville was 13. I would assume, with the opening of our hotel, the TOT per resident has gone way beyond $60 to something perhaps, and I don't know, have those figures, unfortunately, the data was, uh, had stopped there, but I assume would be more around 70 or 80 dollars perhaps, or some, somewhere around that figure. Uh, maybe, uh, you have those figures there, something of the sort. But it's, we, as, we're taxed, city of Capitola is, uh, when it comes to TOT, is taxing its, that, that figure is quite, quite high. Um, also, there was another figure here, which was TOT, uh, as a percentage of general revenues. In 2010, uh, the figures were 6.9%, Santa Cruz, 8, Scotts Valley, 7.8, and Watsonville, 3.2. The state average is 6.8, and again, I believe that figure has, has risen because of the fact that we opened up our hotel, so we may be more like 8. So, city of Capitola, when it comes to TOT, is doing quite well. And, and I did make copies for this, if you'd like to distribute to the, um, for you to think. So I, again, I'm not someone who is, 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 it, there's one other issue here. This year, uh, we have, the TMD is another thing that we charge our guests, which is, uh, goes to the CVC, and, um, this year, it's up for renewal. This is sort of a bad year to be dealing with both TMD and TOT at the same time. My preference, if we want, I'd like to sort of push this, this can down, down, uh, another year or two years, let's get through the TMD of this year and see where things stand, see what the other communities are doing, also here in California. Is Monterey raising theirs, is everybody raising theirs, what's Watsonville doing, what's Scotts Valley doing? Um, I just feel that it would be nice for us to have a year where we actually can concentrate on renewing the TMD, and then maybe coming back and looking at the TOT for the city of Capitola at a later date. All right.
Thank you, Dan.
And I will, should I leave these, or?
Yes, you can leave those, Dan.
I have a question for Mr. Redd. I'm asking money.
I basically just sort of copied and pasted from Excel, and here is actually the first page of that, uh, of the thing that, the TOTs throughout the state of California.
Yeah, Dan, Ed had a question he wanted to...
Yeah, please.
Quick question. First of all, I want to acknowledge all that you do for the city of Capitola, it doesn't go unnoticed.
Okay, well, thank you.
Second of all, um, I just want for clarification, when the city of Santa Cruz and Santa Cruz County adopted this initiative, uh, two years ago, I believe it was.
Yeah.
I believe, didn't the Hotel Association and the CVC forge an agreement to support or not to protest that raise, and that it was in alignment with the new TMD policy?
Right, we did, we did. And, and, you know, at that point in time, I honestly thought that Capitola was also going to go that route. Okay, I'll be, and, and I remember the discussions we had, I didn't think it was two years ago, but, you know, it seems more recent. Uh, I think the discussion was that, uh, this, if the council here decided to wait, uh, to bring up the TOT, because there was a sales tax issue that was on the ballot, and you didn't want to have two issues on the, on the ballot at the same time, and I thought that was a very, um, wise decision on the part of the council here to wait to discuss the TOT. And I do, I think that was very good, and the sales tax did increase, and of course, the sales tax has brought the city a lot more than the TOT increase would have brought. So I think, uh, it was a good decision, uh, and here we are now, a year, a year and a half, whatever it is, uh, later, and I, and this does not surprise me that this is coming up. Um, and as I said, I am not, I mean, I, I could find it almost acceptable. Um, I do know that I'm booking flights and hotels for a trip that I have to make to Toronto right now, and I was just on Expedia and things of the sort, and they give you a gross rate, and that gross rate has got your TOT and your TMDs and all that, and when I'm comparing hotels to hotels, I'm looking at that gross figure, and it does make a difference. So it will impact our hotels, will it impact us a great, great deal? No. We'll survive, we're not going to go broke over this, okay? Um, I think it's going to impact maybe vacations by the sea, I don't think DEDs here present today, or possibly Ben breakfast is more, which, uh, especially when they have long-term stays. Uh, it does affect also convention hotels and, uh, places like the, 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 uh, seascape and things of the sort, more than it does our hotel, because there, people are really looking at gross, you know, they're going to be staying there for a whole week, they want to know what the gross figure is to stay at this hotel versus that. And these, those numbers make a difference. Um, with our hotel, not as much, our hotel's not as much. Um, I, I just think that, again, to just raise taxes for the purpose of raising taxes doesn't seem to be a good reasoning. I, I mean, uh, just because, uh, next door, Santa Cruz and Santa Cruz County are doing it, doesn't, isn't good, for me, a good enough reason for you, the city of Capitola, to do it.
All right, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
All right. But if you need the money.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? See, now, I'm going to close the microphone, bring it back to council for...
I'm holding it, Brian.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I make a comment real quick?
Uh, yes.
Um, so the benchmark study cities, you guys might remember, we did a benchmark study, and a majority of them were greater in TOT tax than we were. And the benchmark study was done with cities that were very similar to ours, so a lot of the cities that have greater than 10 are getting kind of missed on this list. Um, we, I will remind everybody, and I keep saying it over and over, our emergency fund is at about $678,000. If we were to have an earthquake or a flood tomorrow, we do, and that costs us 1.2, so yes, there is a need. No one's, nobody from the Finance Advisory Committee is looking just to increase taxes just for the sake of increasing taxes. So that's our primary concern, is getting that emergency fund up there.
All right, thank you.
Which could be done also by moving money around, you know, which we've done before.
Uh, Dennis, you want to begin?
I don't mind going first. Um, as we can remember, we just got through borrowing, uh, over $2 million to, to replace a parking lot or put a parking lot in, in this city here, that, that the main beneficiary is the tourist industry. It relates to the hotels, it relates to the businesses that we have here. So we incurred debt in this last year. We have a wharf that's probably, um, in its lifespan, we're, we're past the 30-year, 1982, um, demolition of that wharf. We will be facing that in the near future, it will happen, and nature will take its course. Nature will take its course. We have an esplanade that we never finished the improvement phases that we planned to do for that. There's so many projects that, that would benefit the city by any bit of an increase. Another one is, is that we have plans and discussion of adding even more parking and a viable shuttle system to the parking lot right behind the city hall. So, as far as needing money, yes, we need money. Absolutely money. We've had a Goodyear sales tax-wise. And, and going back to that sales tax measure, that, that sales tax measure passed with very little campaigning. It came through public support. And we just, we just got through with a public polling on this thing, just this last month, that showed that 72% of the people in the community support having, going up to the 11%, like our surrounding communities, everyone physically that surrounds us, the county and the City of Santa Cruz do. You know, I talked to 20, 25 people on this, on this issue, and I couldn't find one that has ever looked at the amount of TOT tax when they went to a hotel. It's not a common practice. I'm not saying that that's right or wrong. I'm just saying that, that the 1% is not an issue whether a person determines to go to that hotel or not. There's something to say about consistency. And we, we, we try and get consistency in, in our plastic ordinances, in our, in our, in our policing. This is consistency with the rest of, of the surrounding community. And we are physically surrounded by, by two jurisdictions that are at 11%. That, you know, I, I don't, no, Ted wants to go to battle on this thing. I don't think there's a battle here. I just think that, you know, we, we go to the community here, and we put it out there and let them make a decision whether they, they think it's a good idea or not do, not good thing. But there are services that we need in our community, and we have debt now that we did not have before, that we need to take care of over time. So I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of going to 11% like the rest of our jurisdictions that surround us.
Yes, Stephanie.
Well, we can do a point and counterpoint. I'm, I'm not going to support it right now, but I sure would support it at some other time. And, you know, I think making the case for the need, you know, we could certainly do that anytime, but I kind of feel like it'd be nice to give the community a rest. We're kind of between things, you know? We got over the flood, we got over the mobile home park business, we got over establishing a new parking lot. We're getting through this summer and all of our activities. We're going to be paving a whole lot of streets. Traffic is horrible. People are not enjoying being here right now and going places, and we're going to be tearing up more streets and making it harder for people, as the county is going to be. And it's just going to be a difficult, another difficult year. And I think just to give people, not to have that discussion of what, why we need money, what we need it for, what we're doing, just give the voters a rest for a year, and then in a year or two, we can bring it up and say, okay, we've done this, we've done this, we've done this, we've done this. Now, we have these, and I agree with the argument, we should show some needs, some real kind of immediate needs. And it's hard, it's hard to do that when we've gotten, we've gotten that money in for the, for the roads, which is wonderful, the Measure O money, and, and so I think, I can't make a compelling argument to the voters right now about the need. I feel like government should just take a backseat right now and just do what we do best, which is take care of the residents and the businesses, pave the streets, provide services, try to deal, see what we're going to do with the water situation, and, and then visit it later. We, we have so much on our plates right now as a city. And I know this is just one little thing, and it's only a little bit of money, and if, if it, we didn't do it, we'd look back on the last years, that we missed that money, or the last couple weeks, we missed that, having that money. Money's not everything. So, I'm going to, I'm going to not support it right now. It's, I know the voters supported it with the 70%. That was a small group of people, but I think we need to save our request to the community for when they're real, really more immediate.
Thanks, Stephanie. Next?
Sure. Two words I want to talk about. One is impact, the other is responsibility. The reason I'm going to support this measure is, is the tourism industry is what impacts us, okay? And this makes them a little bit accountable for that. We can talk about comparison of cities, you know, and when I think about Anaheim at 14%, they have Disneyland, they're impacted, okay? They get tourists in there all the time. Sure, they make money off it, but the town is impacted by it. Services are impacted. And I know we are impacted, okay? You know, we, we have that need for the services that are taxing our needs. The other one is responsibility, and that is, you know, when we passed Measure O, you know, Dan made a good point, you know, we just brought in $1 million, but, you know, this year, we, we just budgeted $919,000 of that $1 million into the streets. And part of the job that I see up here, sitting here, is the responsibility, is that when we do take that tax, and we tell you what we're going to do with the money, that we follow through with that. And, you know, major, major improvements are going to be made on Claire's Park and 38th Avenue, okay? These are tangible things that the city sees. And when you ask the question, Dan, do we need the money? We do, because what I'm thinking about right now is, when I talked about this a couple weeks ago, is, you know, we put in this temporary parking lot, and we just got done talking about the skate park, which is another $200,000 that we're laying out. And I can't sit here and keep laying out money without doing something to bring in revenue. And, you know, we tried different ways to do that, but this is just one that, that I believe there was support of the hotel and the CVC industries to do this, okay? It wasn't something that was going to cause a battle. I'm willing to commit that money, and I'm willing to talk about a resolution to put that money into a parking structure, because the big kind of battle that we go over now is, is how long are we going to leave that temporary parking lot? Temporary, and do the citizens of Capitola deserve a park? And the sooner we build a parking structure, because in my mind, we've already demonstrated that by providing 520 parking places, we've relieved a lot of the circulation problem, and we're going to be able to, you know, to make it a better place to come and visit. But the fact is, is that I said this when I approved that parking, temporary parking lot, was that if Capitola leaves that as a temporary parking lot for eternity, we do ourselves a disservice. It's a beautiful piece of land right in the middle of town. So, you know, I, I'm going to support this measure, I, I think. I think because we are an island surrounded by an 11% tax, it's in line. I'm sensitive to the hotel industry. I'm sensitive to the CVC. I don't believe I'm going against them on this. The residents of Capitola, by the survey, gave us 74%. I've got a little bit of support from the Finance Committee and the Treasury. You know, I'm gathering all this information, and what it tells me is, it's not about whether I take the money, it's what I do with the money. And that's why I'm willing to say, right here, I'm committing, that I would like to allocate this money and make a resolution, that we, we push it towards the parking structure and developing that more infrastructure that the city benefits as a whole.
All right, thank you, Ed. Mike?
When Ted Burke talks to us, we generally listen, because he's not up there every week talking about this or that. So, you know, I'm, I'm moved by the, the argument of principle about levying a tax that you don't have an immediate need for. I get that. I also get when Dan schooled us a couple of years ago about how, first of all, it's a 1% increase, it's a 1% TOT tax increase, but it's a 10% increase overall on the TOT. We're increasing the TOT by 10%. We can accept that number. And it, it has a lot of bearing on the large bookings that the hotels do. If someone comes and, and books a block of 30 rooms, believe me, that 1% makes a difference. I believe they overcome that easily because of where they're staying, but still a difference. So it's a, it's a taxation principle question that we have to grapple with as well. I believe that the percent of TOT versus the general revenue is a very important figure, but the dollars per resident, it's a very fuzzy number, and it really doesn't have a bearing, because our residents, maybe they're relatives, but our residents aren't paying this as a tax. That's why we got a 70-plus percent approval. The dilemma that I have is, I'm going to support this, and yet will not campaign for it, will not go out and push it. And I support it in hopes that this council will vote at a future meeting regarding a resolution on what to do with the money. I think it's very important. I believe that a quarter of a percent, which is roughly $30,000, should be allocated yearly to the Chamber of Commerce, because they are our best and cheapest promoter of business in this town. The most value we have. Not, not cheap, affordable, affordable, okay? I saw, I see the executive director in the audience. And I think that if we earmark a percent, like, you know, a quarter of a percent, or 25% of the increase, by resolution to the Chamber, that the harder they work, they might get a little more than $30,000 in the years to come, and it will only benefit us. I have to think that every dollar we give to the Chamber comes back to us as $100 in benefit to the city in general. I'd like to also see part of the resolution be that not just three-quarters of the rest of this 1%, but perhaps this council is ready to get serious and say that we want to start a fund for the parking structure and put most of the TOT, the gross TOT, into it, and set it aside. We have, we have committed to putting money aside for this parking structure two or three times, and it's always somehow disappears and winds up in the general fund. It's, it's mysterious. I remember voting on, on 65 new parking meters. We had some great revenue figures on those 65 meters. They were all supposed to go into a fund for the structure, and gone, part of the parking program. Something to remember. It needs specific action by this council that other councils can refer back to and say, ah, there's a need. They put money aside for a need. Speaking of needs and why we would raise this tax, we're constantly doing more, and the beneficiaries of this doing more, the improvement of the park, the improvement of the streets, the, the overall elevation of the environment that we do constantly and spend money on, is partly for our 10,000 residents and is enjoyed by our 40,000 visitors. So there is a rationale. The difficulty is, and I'm willing to put it to the voters and let them decide, the difficulty is when we get another $100, $150,000 in tax money, that we forget why we did it, and we're not ready to commit to it. So there's a certain amount of faith in my support for this. And the faith is, the next meeting, when staff brings this back, that we make some clear and obvious statements as to where we're going to put the money. So I will move the, the action to put on the ballot, let me, I'm going to need my glasses for this, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, that we adopt a resolution calling for a general municipal election for the submission to the voters of a local ballot measure regarding an amendment to the city's municipal code pertaining to visitor services fees, transient occupancy tax, and requesting the Santa Cruz County Elections Department to consolidate it with the general municipal election of November 4th, 2014.
Is there a second? Some motion and a second? I'm going to speak to the motion before I call for the vote, and I'm just going to say, I think this motion is ill-advised. I don't believe that we've made a very good case statement about why the city needs this money now. The things that have been brought up concerning the new parking lot, you know, we funded that project without this additional money in mind, or had a need for it at the time. And also, in terms of maintaining our infrastructure, that was the basis on which we asked the voters to pass Measure O in 2012. We should follow through with those commitments. Now, we can always just put something out to the voters and say, well, okay, they decide. But I think that affects, because if it doesn't pass, I think it ultimately affects the city's credibility for future tax measures and needs. I do believe that the city will need, at some point in the future, to increase the TOT, and particularly around 2017, when Measure D sunsets for the final time. And there will be a need, and I think there will be a significant case statement that will have to be made at that time, and, and we should preserve, I think, our requests and needs for then. And I think that it would undercut us if we brought this out without an effective case statement and then asked for the residents. I'm not comforted by the survey. When we did the Measure O, the survey indicated that over 60% of the voters would probably vote for it. That measure ultimately squeaked by, by, I think, less than 100 votes. So we got 51%. So there's going to be significant erosion, and particularly, the other thing that concerns me, if there's going to be an asserted campaign against it, and I, but I've heard nothing about a campaign for it. I don't think that we should put things on the ballot that nobody's willing to go out and campaign for. It doesn't, I think, bode well, and I don't think it makes the city look good when you just throw things out there and then aren't willing to put your money and your effort and time behind it to try to get it passed. It's an indication that you don't have a strong need or a case statement for what you're doing. And I also, you know, went back, you know, since the time that I've been on the council, the, you know, the residents and the businesses here have very graciously passed a TOT increase in 2002. I wasn't here in 2002. But in 2004, there was a sales tax measure. In 2008, there was another extension of a sales tax. Well, in 2008, yes, there was an extension of a sales tax measure, and then again in 2012, another tax measure. So only, since 2002, only in two election cycles have we not asked the residents to pass an increased tax. Those times were well warranted, I think, well justified, and the, and the residents and the businesses stepped up then. And I think I agree with Stephanie, we should give them a little bit of a break. Because my view is also that this is not just extra money that comes about. My view is that this is a zero, vacation or tourist dollars are a zero-sum game. If they have to pay more for their hotel, they're going to pay, spend less someplace else. And so we're going to somehow hurt some other businesses through that process. And, and I don't think there's enough compelling need to jeopardize that and take money out of businesses' pockets. And, and we can only speculate about where that will come from. People don't just have unlimited amounts of money to spend when they, you know, go on their vacations, particularly when they're here with multiple family members and for multiple days. I think that we should keep our competitive edge and encourage more people to come and to use our businesses, to use our hotels, instead of just trying to increase the tax. So for those reasons, I'm going to oppose the motion. I would certainly encourage any council members that may be on the fence about it to do the same, and to bring this back at some other future date when we have a clear statement of need to the citizens. So with that, I'll call for the motion, and, yes, Stephanie.
Just one, one last little comment. At some point, it would be, I think, it'd be very interesting to have a discussion about the impact of tourism on our town, and where do we want to go with that? We're having a really successful summer. Businesses are doing well, I hope. Lots of people, parking is doing, parking plan is doing really well. And of course, the tourists cost, cost us money in police and public works and planning and, you know, so many other areas. But do we want to increase our budget to take care of more tourists? I don't know. I don't know how, you know, we'll, it'll be interesting, we have that discussion, because do we want to be building more parking structures? You're bringing more people down here, more impact, more costs. We're going to have to raise more money. It's going to, you know, add more people. Do this, do this. You know, maybe, you know, we, we are what we are, and we know how much it costs. You know, our labor costs go up a little bit, our labor, other materials costs go up, two and a half square miles. You know, we are what we are. Let's be happy with that. And I'm not interested in drawing another 5,000 people in summertime every day. We don't have the room for it. And it's expensive, as we know. So, but we'll have that discussion sometime, and, and, you know, with all of our departments, where, you know, where do we want to go? And, and also have the candidates ask the, the community when they walk in door-to-door, you know, you want a multi-story parking structure for, for the tourists? For more, I mean, would you use it? Are you, you know? I mean, just start talking about some ideas and see where the community is, so, that's all.
Thank you, Stephanie. With that, I'll call the question. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Harley.
Councilmember Norton.
Aye.
Councilmember Botter.
Aye.
Councilmember Termini.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
No. Motion passes three to two, and that will bring us to an adjournment of this meeting. I will adjourn us until the next regular city council meeting on Thursday, August 14th, at 7:00 PM in these council chambers. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like a little bit of clarification. Did the motion...
Did the motion this evening include direction to return with a resolution of intent at the next meeting, or was that not included?
Yes, that was my intent, but I did not make it part of my motion. But, is it appro...
I didn't hear that as part of the motion.
Well, it's not part of the motion, and it would have to be something that, you know, while it's true that any council member can request something to be brought as an agenda item, I would think it'd be more appropriate at the next meeting, under oral communications, for a council member to request that formally, so that the other council members are on notice that it would become forward.
Well, and we should also be, Tony, be prepared with a legal analysis about whether, at what point does it become a special tax, okay? Even in portions of it, or if you have a resolution allocating it, or even a statement that at some future date, you're going to try to pass a resolution to allocate it after the fact. I think that's a bit of a shell game, but I, we really need to grapple with those issues.
We've analyzed that issue very carefully in past ballot measures, and so we'll be happy to provide you with a memorandum addressing that question.
That would be good.
I've been to Blythe several times, but I never stayed overnight there. I taught at Indio High School, and I used to accompany the away basketball games. We went to Brawley, Blythe, San Diego. We would go on hours to go play on our basketball teams. And those are, that's a big, that's a big highlight of those cities, are those basketball games and wrestling matches and football games. Big time in those little towns.
Wasn't Blythe the city they built out of McCullough Motors moved out there? They moved the whole, moved the corporation or the industry out there, and they had all their employees move out there, and that's how Blythe was formed?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to adjourn this meeting this evening. Thanks, everyone, for attending, and I think it was...